Vera was the swing voter, right? She's very powerful. What's your, you know, that you could talk about the chairmanship and everything else. It still comes down to you need three votes to win stuff. Do you think Vera enjoys that? Or do you think it's just she accepts that's the job? And she's taken it on herself to go ahead and be that person?
I think she, from what I gather from watching the meetings, I haven't been to meeting in person in a long time. But from watching them and listening to it, I think she accepts that role. Obviously, I can't speak for her, but I, I don't know how much I would enjoy being that person. I think it's a hard job. Um, and I think you're in a hard place, especially when you have to sit between those two groups of men every meeting and be that person in the middle, which I, I think she might be in the middle all of the way. I think she might sit between them too.
Yeah, a lot of fur flies around Vera and.
Well, thanks for letting us come today and present to you. Uh, we are with Black Hills Energy. My name is Lynn Kedall. I am the Community Affairs Manager. We have Michael Pogony with us. He's the General Manager of Operations. And Ken Myros, who is the Operations Manager. I would say Operations Director.
He's waiting for you.
Yeah, I'm the newbie in a bunch. But we have come before and on a regular basis to give you guys updates on operations and what we have going on. I, I guess it's been a couple of years. I think COVID threw a little wrench in that. But definitely wanted to get back into the habit of meeting with you guys on a regular basis, telling you what we have going on for operations at the company, what our, our forecast looks like as far as infrastructure and, and development. And then highlight the partnerships that we have here in Newcastle area and then open it up for questions. This year, we do have the franchise agreement is up. I think it expires in August. So following this conversation, we'll get an updated draft to you guys to, to start that, that conversation. And along that process, we're happy to answer any questions. Come back with any information. Of course, we are open and transparent and willing to, to work with, with everybody. We sure appreciate your business here in Newcastle and look forward to a long future doing that. So with that, I will turn it over to Michael and.
I'll maybe sit there if you just want to. Thanks, everybody. Really do appreciate your time. I used to serve on a small town as a council member as well, in a small community in South Dakota. So appreciate what you guys do. It's, it's not just your day job, right? You have other things going on. So thank you for making some time for us tonight. You know, as we, as we talked about, really wanted to give you guys a little bit of an update of what we're doing, where we're going as a company. We really find it's valuable. We asked the mayor for a little bit of time to talk through as a business unit, our electric utility, but also as a corporation, what we do. And so obviously, you know, we provide electric service in Newcastle. We also provide gas service here. So but that service territory is much larger than Wyoming. We, we serve eight states in the Midwest and about a million, 1.3 million customers. So in that footprint from Arkansas to Wyoming, in just about every state in between, we provide either gas or electric. A little bit of that, a little more detail on the, on the electric side. We have three electric utilities that serve customers of about 300,000 electric customers. That's our, what we call our South Dakota Electric Utility, which is the one that we work with. And that, so that's Western Wyoming, Western South Dakota and then Eastern Wyoming. So up in Newcastle would be included in that service territory. We also serve the area of Cheyenne with electric. So the municipal boundaries of Cheyenne, in addition to the gas there, we also do the electric there. And then going even further south into Southern Colorado, we provide electric service to Pueblo and then West and East Canyon City and Rocky Forest. So kind of a very geographic split. And certainly, as you can appreciate, three distinctly different areas of service, you know, South Dakota, Wyoming, very similar. Cheyenne, a little bit different, then Colorado, a little bit different. So it's definitely a different territory, but it's the same mission, which is providing energy to our customers. So one of the things that we do at Black Hills, which we think brings a lot of value is we're what's called a vertically integrated utility. So Neil Simpson Two, which is the coal plant that provides the majority of energy for Black Hills Power, is fed by Powder River Basin Coal at the Wyadac Plant, which is right across the interstate. So we mine the coal with Wyadac Resources. We convey the coal to Black Hills Power. And that ultimately gets generated across our transmission lines and serves Newcastle customers. So we really feel we're one of a handful of those types of facilities in the nation. We believe that it provides great value to customers. You know, across our footprint as well, in addition to that, on a little bit on the natural gas side of things, you know, obviously we operate in the states. We also do operate not in Wyoming, but we also provide a similar number of production facilities in Kansas, Iowa, Nebraska, where we generate our natural gas from the wells and then serve customers at distribution miles. So again, pretty quite a bit of value there. You know, just kind of give you some fast facts about the, the energy that we provide as a utility, as a corporation, about 9,000 miles of electric line that we have to operate and maintain. And about almost 50,000 miles of natural gas. So there's, there's a whole lot of territory for us to cover. Lynn, if you want to go to the, the next slide. So we talk about South Dakota and really Eastern Wyoming is, is a pivotal part of this as well. We call it our South Dakota Electric Utility. Really, the service territory here is southeastern Montana, all the way down to about Edgemont, South Dakota. So up in Newcastle, Belfus, Sturgis, Rapid City, everybody in the western part of the state. In South Dakota, we're bounded by the cooperatives kind of on our eastern and northern boundaries. So about 76,000 customers in our service territory. Black Hills Energy, South Dakota was the first utility for Black Hills Energy. So we, we've been providing power in the Black Hills region for almost 150 years now. That started at Homestead, Homestead Mine in Deadwood back in 1800s. And we've grown that footprint obviously since then. So we're very proud of that. You know, our, our corporation as a, as a whole, about 3,000 employees across those eight states. We have about 750 employees that are in South Dakota and Wyoming. So that would be, you know, our corporate office in Rapid City. Of that 700, about 215 are Black Hills Energy, South Dakota employees. So from the generation plants in Gillette to Rapid City Generation Facilities to those of us that work in the operations team. So that kind of gives you a scale of how large we are as an organization. Going to the next slide. Want to talk a little bit about our generation portfolio. So as I mentioned, we, you know, we started in Deadwood many years ago and have grown as the utility. And as you can all appreciate, the energy that we provide has also changed and evolved over the years. We were very proud of our history in coal and, you know, we've also diversified our energy resource mix as well. Natural gas has become much more affordable. We are also starting to integrate some renewables into our portfolio. One of the things that we're very proud of is we have a very diverse mix. So if you look at the slides, you can see we still have about 40% of our coal resource. So coal provides about 40% of our resource generation. Natural gas is about 40%. And then the balance really is a little bit of diesel generation for emergency backup and then wind and solar. So we are integrating more renewables in, but as we've been demonstrated through winter storms and events, you have to have a balanced generation portfolio. You have to have this manageable coal and natural gas.
Yeah, don't put us on the front.
But that, that kind of gives you a high level on what our portfolio is for, for energy resources. So if you go to the next slide, Lynn. I want to give you kind of a 20-year outlook now. So providing service to customers, as you can imagine, the Black Hills is growing. I know Newcastle's growing. Western South Dakota is growing a lot as well. And so what we do every three years is we look in the 20-year horizon. Because if you don't start planning in that 20-year horizon, by the time it gets here, you're five or 10 years behind. And so we do what's called an Integrated Resource Plan. And really what that integrated plan does is it looks at our generation resources and how we're going to get the power to customers. We completed our last resource plan in 2021. And we're actually on the heels of starting another one later this year. But what that resource plan indicated was because of the growth in the area, we, we do have the, the need to add additional generation. And so a couple of things that we're working on. South Dakota, last fall, we added energy from the Fall River Solar Facility in Hot Springs. And so that was an 80-megawatt facility that came online in September. And that is basically a non-Black Hills own facility. We purchased the power from that facility. And all customers get the benefit of 80 megawatts of solar energy from that facility. Our resource plan also indicates that we need to add another 100 megawatts of renewable energy. And so we're literally as we speak today, we're negotiating the final terms and conditions of that agreement with that resource that come online in 2026. One of the projects that, that I've been working quite a bit on and our team will be working on pretty hard here over the next year and a half is an upgrade to Neil Simpson Two in Gillette. So as I mentioned, Neil Simpson Two is our, our flagship coal plant for Neil Simpson and for Black Hills Power customers. That facility is at its engineered life. So it was in 1995. In 2025, it'll be 30 years old. And so when you have a facility that reaches its engineered life, you have two options. You either shut it down or re significantly reinvest to repurpose the unit for the future. So that it can run another 30 years. We went through a process and an evaluation, engineering evaluation, and Neil Simpson is part of this integrated resource plan will be rehabilitated and will have the ability to either fire coal or natural gas. So we're actually going to add natural gas into that portfolio. What that does for us is gives us a lot more flexibility in operations. When natural gas prices are low, there's a lower maintenance cost associated with natural gas. So you reap the benefit of those lower natural gas prices. But when natural gas is higher, we can then leverage our coal resource there and use coal in that burn as well. So it gives us a lot of flexibility. If you guys remember Winter Storm Yuri, Neil Simpson Two is what kept the lights on for Black Hills customers. So that coal plant during Winter Storm Yuri, you know, very cold temperatures kept the lights on. And so it definitely demonstrates the need to have a responsible balanced portfolio of resources. Some of the other things that we're working on with that resource plan is we're, we're looking at new technologies, innovative technologies. We've got our batteries. We've been at battery storage at the utility scale. Does that make sense? Batteries are very costly and so we're trying to go, you have to do the cost benefit on batteries. You might've just heard, we just had an announcement with the South, or the Wyoming Energy Authority on a pilot project at Gillette, where we will be working with an engineering vendor to potentially convert coal into, convert coal into hydrogen gas. So that, that's an interesting project because we can burn hydrogen in our turbines as well. So there's some interesting plays with that as well. And I believe the governor's office contributed a pretty significant grant to that. So it's like a $32 million project. So pretty, pretty exciting and it's literally on the cutting edge. That's the one thing you can say about Wyoming and coal is they're very thoughtful about the future. And so that, that gives a very good outlook for us. Doing a lot of research with the University of Wyoming as well on new innovative technologies to, to keep the lights on well into the future. So kind of looking at the next slide. So we're balancing, you know, when you think about energy portfolio and energy mix, customers want the lights on and we demand the lights on 99.9999% of the time, right? And we're very proud of our fact, and Ken will talk a little bit about it in a slide or two. We're very proud of it. We have reliability that is that good. We, 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 customers expect it and that's, that's what our standard is. And so you know, as we think about the evolution in the energy world, looking at renewables and integrating renewables, we still have a standard of performance and reliability that we need to meet. And so part of the targets that we're looking at, as we look at our electric utilities and our natural, and our natural gas utilities, we are looking at reducing our greenhouse gas emissions from our utility for natural, or for the electric utilities by 70% in 2040. Now, understanding that we have to do this in a responsible way and not significantly impact rates of customers. So thus far, we've achieved 33% and that's been through retiring plants that are at the end of their useful life and running our resources really efficiently and ensuring that the lights stay on. Similar on the natural gas side, we have something what we call net zero, where we're trying to reduce the emissions and the use from our natural gas system, which you know, that's common sense as well. You don't want to lose natural gas from your system. And so we're working very hard to replace old pipe and, and ensure that we reach net zero by 2035. So with that, I will turn it over to Ken for a little bit of an operations update. He's going to talk a little bit about local, kind of more of the local things impacting the electric utility here. If you guys have any other questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Well, as I said earlier, I'm Ken Myros. I'm an Operations Manager for Black Hills Energy. And I see a lot of familiar faces. And so I've been with the company for almost 30 years. So in fact, a little brief, I actually started climbing poles here in Newcastle, both places where I had to come to work for a while, almost every day. So, so I know the town very well. So Mike alluded to earlier, but this is one, this is the slide, if you could, system reliability. This is the slide I get to brag a little bit about. And if, first off, the top of the grid, the, the graph at the right-hand side, we'll see where we line up. And we're, we fall into the top part of the nation as far as reliability. And then what that says at is last year, we had 42 minutes, a little over 42 minutes of the, of outage time for the average customer. And that's what SAD means. It's the average duration of an outage per customer. And so that's really outstanding. But I think, but I'd really like you to point to is the very last one, where it says Wyoming, 1.96 minutes. So in other words, the average customer throughout all last year in Wyoming, that's our customer, was only out for two minutes if you are to follow customers. So I would assume that most people here lights turn on every time you, you put the switch. And that's something we're really proud of. And we put a lot of work into it. And I'll go a little bit more on what it takes to make that happen. But, but under two minutes is, is just outstanding. So we're really proud of that. And then the next is the safety, which is basically average time that a customer's had outage. And once again, if you look at that, that's, that's less than one, one time. So most customers, like I just said, never had an outage on last year. And so like I said, that's, you know, that's really important, not only for, for our customers, playing with employees and stuff, but businesses. You know, if you're a business owner, you know, when the power's out, you lose money. And so it's really important that we have the reliability to help follow us. So some of the things that we do to ensure that reliability is, is several different projects. And so when you look at transmission lines, if you look at the map over there, you'll see the orange lines, those are the transmission lines. And we have to, we have to have several sources because for obvious reasons, if, if we have a storm and it tears down a line or if we're doing maintenance online, you know, we don't work 230,000 volts. Excuse me, 230,000 volts high, right? So we have to turn them off when we work on them. And so this redundancy is very important. And so, and that gives the ability that something does go wrong, customers don't even know it, but they just fed out a different line and, and light goes on. And so one of the really large projects we have coming up, I won't go into every detail. But we're building a new line that basically goes from, extend the line that goes from Gillette down to Cheyenne, and then it cuts over into Nebraska. And once again, that'll just be one more piece of redundancy that we'll have. And also give us the ability to, to for lack of a better term, shipmark electricity out of Wyoming and other areas. And so that, that helps with our reliability. Another program that we have is the Distribution System Integrity Program. And as it states on here, you know, like everything else, it gets old. Our poles get old, our underground cable gets old, and we start having faults and things like that. So we have a program that we're going through and we're replacing aged infrastructure. This summer, we'll actually be doing a job right here in Newcastle, replaces the cable that crosses underneath the highway around and doing a bunch of work there. So you can see us out there. That's what we're doing. We're replacing that old cable and installing, you know, the new cable. The old cable, you know, lasts approximately 20, 25 years. The new stuff is, should last way much longer than that. You know, that's what they're promising us. And I believe we know the cable is, is built in a much better manner. We're also changing out of poles and replacing the old cable or old cord or wire. Copper after a while gets annealed and it gets really brittle. And so it's necessary for us to replace that. I might mention that, you know, we, Newcastle, of course, we've been around quite a while. An interesting fact is that Deadwood had streetlights before Denver. Just a quick note. So then another project we have, I want you to go to the next page. Is where we, we just recently finished rebuilding up the transmission line that goes from Gillette to Rapid City. And of course, we make several stops in between. And that's once again for reliability. The line was being aged. And so we rebuilt it and so it could go another 50 years. So some of the key safety reliability programs. And I'm going fast. If you have questions, please stop. I'm more than happy to explain it. But if we talk about 2023, one of the things that we do is every year we do 20% of our lines, we go to literally every pole. Every, every, we open up every underground transformer. We, we look at all of our systems, 25, excuse me, 20% a year. And the purpose of that is just to find things wrong before they go bad. In other words, before there's an outage, the idea is to fix it. And so we did over 20,000 inspections last year on the system. That includes here in Wyoming. We remediated 444 things that we did find wrong before they, they caused an outage. We went around and inspected almost 5,000 poles. Same thing. We, we go on, we hire companies to test every pole every five years, or excuse me, every 10 years for poles. And of course, we've been a lot of tree trimming, 567 miles of tree trimming. One of the challenges, and I'm, I'm sure Greg will tell you the same thing, or anybody, is that is the macro economics that we've been dealing with. Between interest rates and supply chains, it's really been slowing us down. You know, if you do an example, some of the transformers now are more than three times the cost they were just a few years ago. And that's if we can get them. We, we struggle getting sub transformers between the growth of the nation and, you know, think about hurricanes and things like that. They'll, they'll, of course, they'll prioritize people out of power. And so they, they drop a lot of those things. So we, we have been in trouble, having real issues with our supply chain, getting our, so far it hasn't affected us. But there's definitely some ailment going on when, when a truck is supposed to come to load transformers and it's late. But we have been able to keep up with it. And that's, that's, and that's not only distribution ones, but transmission, trans, excuse me, transmission transformers and everything. It's, the whole system has been slowed down. We've been, like I said, we've been able to keep up with it. And luckily, we have a very robust system. And so it works out. We'll be fine. But it's, it's just an issue. Like I said, the beginning business right now is going through. Any questions on that? I want to ask you a couple.
From where it comes, your transformers.
So we buy them from a company out of Texas in Mexico.
And they make them there?
They make them. So the product, but the components come from all over. But that's where they make them, yes.
The transformer?
Correct. You know, the poles, they come from different locations. A lot of them come from Washington State and some other areas.
Do you get any of your energy from the hydroelectric dams on Missouri?
No, we do not. So I don't know how much detail like you want me to go to. That is a WAPA, Western Power Association, it's the government. And so when they built that, they went to government entities. So the Ellsworth Air Force Base, for example, in colleges. And then also then what was left over after that, they divested out to all the towns, the municipal ones, not investor owner or real electrics, but municipals. And that's who gets it. The only hydro we have is just a little bit out of Spearfish Canyon.
That, that one little one still, I was going to ask that. That works up there. That's beautiful.
Yeah, it was built in 2011 and it still generates today.
Love it. Awesome.
Well, thank you.
So I just wanted to, to touch on a little bit of how we partner with the Newcastle community. I get the fun job. These guys have to do the hard work. I just get to, to partner with, with the nonprofits and the communities and work on fun projects and everything that you guys have going on. So just wanted to walk through, I won't go through all of these numbers, but some of the things that we really focus on and that you've seen us partner with you throughout the years are charitable contributions. You know, we, we support the nonprofits, sponsor different events, work on capital projects. I know we contributed to the Senior Center a few years ago, the new roof. We've partnered a lot with, with the Fairgrounds on some of the construction projects out there. We are proud to partner with the chambers and economic development initiatives that our smaller communities have going on. So we, we really pride ourselves on, on how we engage and support the communities and, and the visions that you see for yourselves. Also in volunteer ways too. I know we, it was last year or the year before, I think the year before, we did a trunk or treat. And we had, the lineman came out and handed out candy. We probably, our candy, we probably went through $600 for the candy. They kept calling, we need more candy. We need more candy. So we, we did the fun things like that. Thank you. So energy assistance is also something that we put a lot of effort into. We have our Black Hills Cares Program. So we are, it's an opportunity for our employees and our customers to contribute to energy assistance programs. Here locally, we partner with the Newcastle Ministerial Association and I visit with them on a regular basis. And they get a few thousand dollars every year to help people in your community that need help pay and pay their bill. We don't want to see anybody in, in the, the winter have to go without power. And the stories that you hear are just heartbreaking. So we are, we're happy, happy to be able to, to partner in that way. We also work with our local media stations, KASL and the New Center Journal to promote, you know, the high school sports and all the fun things that, that make a community special. And we, we like being a part of that. So like I said, I get, I get the fun job. I don't have to climb poles, but I can, I can partner with the, the cool things that Newcastle has going on. So with that, I think the last slide, we just talked about kind of who are our energy, our, our Black Hills Energy leadership team is. And I just want to say that, that we have, we have almost 800 employees between South Dakota and Wyoming. I mean, a lot of those are in our corporate headquarters, but over 200 of them are working. Their, their Ken's crews working really hard to, to keep the lights on every day. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
When you mentioned economic development?
Yes, sir.
The last meeting that we had with someone from Black Hills Energy, it was Black Hills, I think, Power at the time. So what, what are you actually doing for reaching out or helping or doing what, what are you doing with economic development? Because we sure love, I'd like to build your transformers.
So that's where we partner with your economic development organizations. Cause I can't, you know, and, and we have a really strong business development arm. So if there's, if there's businesses that you're working with and things that we can do to help attract businesses to Newcastle, we can absolutely have those conversations. We do that with a lot of our communities where we, we, you know, do site visits, work on site visits with potential businesses who are coming into the area and, and happy to, to talk to them about the, you know, the energy and reliability and all the things that are important to those businesses.
Are you working more so with Chamber of Commerce's or are you working with city councils?
It depends on the area. But we do a lot of work with chambers. But in some of the smaller towns, the chambers don't do a lot with economic development. It's more of a city council than we work with city council.
At this time, we have neither.
Yes, it's kind of startling.
We're struggling, we'll say. We're building the team.
Happy to help.
Well, well, I will try. Well, well, I'll look on that.
Do you want to touch base a little bit on the ordinance agreement that is expiring soon? Just for some of your council leaders that aren't aware of, with all details?
Absolutely, do you want to?
So in, in Wyoming, and this is, you know, a lot of states have a self-put as what Wyoming does. We have a franchise to operate the utility in, in the, the city footprint, basically. Those agreements generally are, in many cases, long-term agreements. You know, when we talk about integrity investments and that, and it's multi-millions of dollars of investment into the community. The, the most recent agreement, I believe expires in August, and was a twenty-five-year agreement, so. Ken, Ken, I think, was a lineman maybe at the time, at one time, but, so we have, you know, we have the, the franchise agreement which is coming. Really what it is, is the franchise is an agreement between Black Hills and the city that allows us to operate in the city and that also contemplates the, the cost sharing between them. And so there's a franchise fee and those kinds of things, but it is, you know, it's due. And really what it does is it, it gives us, and this kind of plays a lot into Greg's world, is just, you know, how we operate in the city, how we can construct infrastructure, how we can rebuild our lines, how we can replace our streetlights and those kinds of things. And that's what the franchise does for us. So I think our next steps really were is, we wanted to provide a business update, we felt, you know, to give a little bit of education on what we do. And then going the next steps would be to circulate a draft of the franchise. Obviously, any questions that there are on the franchise, you would go through those, and then really come to terms on the franchise and, you know, preferably execute that before the next one, or the current one expires.
And you, are you, you want to have a draft worked up for us?
Yep, we're very close, I believe, to having the draft ready.
We emailed, you got, you showed me that the copy.
Yeah, I did.
Of the current, of the current franchise, so. I mean, generally speaking from a contextual standpoint, obviously, the language may be, you know, it's twenty-five years old. The language may be more modern, but as far as the form of context, it'll be very similar to what you have today.
So being that you have such a strong presence in the area, I mean, there isn't really anybody else that we could look to for, for the energy that you guys provide, right? There's, there's not really any other companies that would be available to run the franchise here in Newcastle?
Provided that, yes, so there's a significant investor in the area, and, and it does, yeah, it does take a lot to operate a utility. But, but as far as law goes, and I would defer to the attorney or others, that's how the process is set up. It's a process to create, you know, an open and transparent process for negotiating the terms, so. There are other energy providers in Wyoming, obviously, but.
You guys are kind of the guides for the area.
Well, that's, that's one, that's one reason why we wanted to, to come and speak is to talk about reliability and to ensure that, that, you know, to let you know, because I would, I would think that if, you know, if, if your lights are out, you know, twice a week, you'd be looking at us thinking, you know, I'm not so sure about these guys, you know? And that's why it's important that, that we provide such a service for you guys, because really, that's our goal, is that you don't even think about electricity. You know, that if it just works, we, you know, we move, you know, we fix that.
Works in California?
Very likely. You know, one of, one of the things I wanted to touch on, too, that Lynn talked about, you know, community, community development and involvement, you know, we, we are proud, and Lynn does have a fun job, and it's kind of fun to work with Lynn on some of the things. And I, I remember now, John mentioned, we, we've been out here before, and I met Don before, and, and Thomas as well. You know, we firmly believe as an organization that investing in communities helps everybody grow, and so when communities prosper, it helps us as a business. And so if there's ways that we can help, we want to help, but also, you know, we, we really want to make sure that we provide the best service we can for you. So again, through this, the process of franchise is just very open and transparent, come to terms and, and look forward to the next twenty-five years.
Got a question. Is there any chance of getting a gas bill and an electric bill combined, instead of setting out two bills and paying two separate?
We're working on that right now, John. So just kind of very high level on that. Utilities have merged over the last hundred years, and so when you look at, like, the gas utilities in Wyoming and the electric utilities, you know, we used to have hundreds of utilities in the United States, we're down to about a hundred and ten now. And so they're, they're the artifact of legacy companies, and so when you bring them together, you know, the tariffs are a little different over here, you know, the rules and regulations of each utility are a little different. And so what we have to do, John, in order to bring those two together, we need to make sure that we get all of the processes integrated into the same thing and then go through the approval processes at the state P O C level to make sure that happens. It is, what we call that is simplification. We've been working on that in Nebraska for almost ten years, we have twelve jurisdictions in Nebraska, or something like that. So it's, it's a process, but we are working on Wyoming right now, it's just, it's a slow process.
If we could just give the, the, when they're due at the same time?
Well, we'll take that, I mean, certainly take all the feedback back and.
Mine is here and here, and so then I do have to, on hold fashion, I write checks.
I hear a lot of that.
No, definitely, we'll take the feedback, certainly, simple is usually better, so let's, let's see if we can get some privacy there.
I don't think we can talk about reliability, basically, on that, you can increase somebody.
Reliability pre-gaming last ten years, you know, with the residential, it's not really much that we think about. If the lights are out, we just gotta reset our clock or something, but where I work at, it's pretty detrimental when we have a little bump or something, and just in the reliability that we've seen over the last several years, it's really helped us out on what we do.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be a big difference for, for you guys and all of Wyoming, is that we built our new sub, the big sub that we have just kind of north of town. We had a huge difference, of course, we brought more line, more, more lines into it and so on, and it's, it's really helped a lot. It was, it was a very large investment, I can't remember how many millions. I don't have that off the top of my head, so I don't want to say, be wrong, but it was a huge investment, but that's exactly the reason why, just for that.
I don't know, that almost two minutes that we were without a power was pretty devastating.
Well, for some people, I'd say that is.
I don't, I don't remember it happening all year, probably for the last three or four years.
We're glad that you don't have to think about it.
Yeah, really.
That's our goal.
Been good?
No, thank you, guys, appreciate that. Yeah, we, we had, so we, we track that S A D number every single year, and, you know, as we invest in our system, what we've seen since winners, winners from Alice in twenty thirteen, we've increased our vegetation management and increased our integrity work, and you see that in the, the outage that's going down, 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 down. So we see it in the paper, so definitely is, is worth doing.
I don't want to be ridiculous with this, but Jeff Bezos talked to the United States Energy Commission, and he, he's got permission to put satellites up that will catch the solar and beam it down for electrical power on the earth. He got permission to stick up thirty-eight hundred satellites here about a year ago. And my thought on that immediately, when, when Jeff got that, I mean, he, he just keeps piling up the money. But as it is now, if, if I wanted to produce electric power, you, you have to let me sell it to you, right? If I, if I produce my little whatever.
Been trying to get this one down.
I've been trying to talk these guys into getting a, never mind. I digest the burn of gas.
We, we actually, we, we do that in our, in our Iowa and our Kansas utilities. We partner with the wastewater plants, we're capturing the methane off of the digesters and, and processing it and putting it back in a distribution system.
I think you're smart to do that.
You're pretty smart, and you need to have a really old landfill, too. It has to be a very old landfill.
Well, we got one, I have one close on the top of it, so we're just gonna pull the trigger. Anyway, I didn't want to lose Jeff. Now, my thought was, as soon as, as he got permission to do all that, why can't someone like you sue the feds? Or not sue him, but, but get to where he has to let you in on the deal? That he has to, you know, I, I don't know, is there some way you can do that? Because he's just gonna monopolize the, the whole damn thing, and it's not pleasant to have a monopoly.
It's a, let's just say, you know, ener, energy is incredibly important. Transmission to get that energy to wherever we need it is really important, and, you know, Ken talked about the project already, Wyoming project that we'll work on, and the one we just did. That's a little beyond our, our twenty-year plan.
I'm thinking about satellites.
You know what, I would say this, we, we believe in a responsible, balanced approach to energy, but we are looking at innovative technologies for some of them, so.
Maybe you could go over there and meet with them, Tom, maybe you could go over to Rapid and meet with these people.
We've got to sit here till seven, we might as well visit with these people. We can't even start the everything, you know, it's, it's the law, you know? No kidding, I think that, I just can't stand monopolies, and that's exactly what he's getting to become. And I think that you guys are, you're the little guys in that case, and, and I don't think you should get left out.
We're always looking for opportunities, so.
Well, in twenty years from now, if, if he's, if he's allowed that time to build his thing, you'll never get anywhere. So I think you should go to speak guys now and start saying, hey, do we need to start thinking about these satellites? See what, what role they can play in our twenty-year plan.
Write your Congress report.
No, I'm talking to the people, not you, that's what I'm doing, I'm not a congresswoman.
No, it's, it's very interesting technology.
Well, it is, and, and it's, it's.
How feasible is that?
I'm, I'm not an intermediary to speak to the expertise of that knowledge, so.
I look at that, and I think maybe we can roast a cow or two, but.
What we can know is Jeff Bezos has his money in it, it's probably a dang good idea.
Well, he's getting a lot of money from the U.S. government, too.
Well, sure he does, it did, I'm having now, anyway.
I'll shut up. I used to work in the coal bed nothing out north of Gillette. Did you guys ever purchase any of that yet?
I didn't do the question, I'm sorry.
The coal bed methane development, so we actually haven't.
No. It's all dried up now, hopefully, I, I was involved.
There were actually wells on our wide ag coal plant, or coal mine, that were operated out of a producer that did C D M.
So what about the, the Osage Power Plant, were you guys involved with those?
Oh, yeah.
Was that one of your plants?
Yeah, that was a needle, Mike seemed to, and there was a needle plant, it was so old, what they did is, they poured the coal on conveyor belt, and it just ran through the plant, it was so inefficient, horrible. But, but at the time, it was, of course, in the building, but yeah, it was so inefficient and it, and it was dirty.
We never forgot you tore it down.
Yeah, I watched, I watched them.
Hey, but then we built a bunch more, so.
Was the water operator, yeah, system real little.
Oh, yeah.
I watched some information.
Yeah, I was out there, so. That was a good conversation.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Canow. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.